Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
The St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Human Services Committee will come to order. The clerk will call the roll.
Certainly. Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Greatop?
Here.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Ward?
Here.
Commissioner London?
Here.
We have a quorum.
If we could raise for the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda. Commissioner Greatop?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would like to move from the Environment Public Works 7A Resolution 1238, County at Large Drain Assessment for 2012, to 7A and slide your A through F down one notch. The Drain Commissioner will be coming through the door in about 30 seconds of the 7 o'clock meeting he needs to attend.
Do I hear a second for that motion?
Second.
I would second it.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Agenda approved. Citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens to be heard this evening? Citizens to be heard this evening. Hearing none, we'll move to updates. Bill, our convention, Visitors Bureau update.
Actually, Marcy Vogel called me tonight. She's sick, so she was going to come in next week to give an update, but a lot of what she's going to talk about, I actually sit on that board also. The Convention and Visitors Bureau is willing to take on the expense of hiring an individual to market the facility, the convention center, okay? And the piece that they do ask for the county to do is provide a budget for some of the marketing materials. As many of you know, the Convention and Visitors Bureau has committed 1% of their total funding to the cost of the convention facility, and they see that it's important and understand the need to really get somebody on board now to go out and market this thing. So a combination of bringing the person in, working with the county, like I said, to provide some of the marketing materials, that expense would come back on us, that they'll bear that cost. And if you actually looked at some of the manning tables, that expense was an expense that was going to be covered by the county. So I think it's a great partnership with them, like to continue forward. They know they've got to bring somebody that has a knowledge of conventions, and Marcy's put the feelers out to the industry and really, she's already had, I know, a few interviews and that, and they want to get somebody in the very near future on board to handle that.
Jeff, I was just going to make a point of clarification. You said that Convention and Visitors Bureau has pledged 1% of their revenue. It's actually 1% of their 5% of tax, which represents 20% of their revenue.
20% of their total revenue. I'm sorry.
I knew where you were coming from, but I just wanted to make the clarification.
Which in today's dollars, roughly $125,000. They know there's obviously going to be an increase in room, you know, 10 to 15% kind of industry norm is what they're talking about with the addition of the convention facility. Like I said, they're willing to hire somebody to do that. I think we all understand we need to get out in front of this to, just to let these meeting planners know this facility's coming, because a lot of these conventions are, you know, two to three years out kind of stuff. And then really, you know, get some really good marketing materials and really go out and start to book this thing. She'll be in to talk more about it next week, but that's kind of the general premise of what the discussion's going to be. Obviously, we're going to...
Jeff, not to get into a long discussion about the Convention Bureau, but I wanted just to make sure to hear from you and Bill that the amount of the budget for the Convention Center has not changed at all. I know we've said that many times, but there's been quite a few articles in the paper about it, about the budget, about, the $9 million is still the amount, just to make sure that that's out there.
I think we all agree that we need to, correct me if I'm wrong, we all agree we need to get somebody on board to go out and start, you know, promoting this thing.
I do want somebody that responds to this board and answers to our administrator, though. That's, we'll talk next week, as far as I've heard, but that's real important to me, is...
And there's different, you know, levels of staffing that we're going to be required to have, you know, for the facility, and there's going to be a lot more discussion as far as, I think, the overall management of it in general, you know, whether the Convention Center, some of the things we've talked about with McMorn, you know, as far as trying to get some synergies there, so that's more to come.
Any more discussions on the Convention Center? Okay, well, moving on to the conceptual initiatives, conceptual initiatives, any? All right, moving on to item number seven, new business, and I think I saw the Drain Commissioner come into the room, so would you like to come up and give us your discussion, Mr. Wiley?
Absolutely. Thank you for having me here tonight. I just wanted to go over my budget for this past year. We talked about a $500,000 budget, but as we got rolling along and work progressed through the year, we've had some storm events that we had to address later in the year as we neared that $500,000 County at Large Budget. We ended up exceeding that by $11,937.27, so I would like to ask if the board would be willing to increase my budget from the $500,000 that was approved to the $511,937.27 to cover those extra charges that we ran into at the tail end of our budget year.
Correct me if I'm wrong, there's just some things you don't have, hence the monsoon came through and blew the drains apart. I mean, there's issues you don't have much control over sometimes in those situations.
Right, and some of the things, the, some of the township supervisors are seeing the value in having these drains that are functioning properly, and they're calling me up more frequently saying, you know, "We've got some extra money, could you come and do this?" Well, we're trying to balance it all out, but sometimes they have, say, a beaver dam that's holding the water up four feet that we have to get into, and it's, we try and leave a little extra for the end of the year to compensate for that, but unfortunately, you may end up with four extra beaver dams in which you planned on. It happens.
Mr. Coven, is there some response you could give to that on giving us advice on how we can do this, or?
Sure, actually, I, before the meeting, I spent some time talking with Ms. Hepting about this and how we might fund it, and we've, she's been working on the year-end budget adjustments, which will be presented to you next week, and she has already included this 11, approximately $12,000 additional in the year-end budget adjustments, so the funds are there to support it. Every year, the Drain Commissioner comes to you and asks for adjustments. Sometimes it's up, sometimes it's down, and this year it just happens to be up a little bit.
I believe last year was down, so...
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
So administration would certainly support.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Wiley while he's here?
I'd make a motion to move this on.
Discussion? Do we need a roll call on?
Let's go on a full board.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
On my way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, moving on to item number 7A, Library Network Delivery Service Contract. I see Allison in the audience. Allison, you're gonna, I don't know if there's going to be any questions or not.
I guess I just ask, is this just routine renewal?
Yes.
I'd make a motion.
Discussions or questions for Allison? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you. Item number 7B, Resolution for 11, for the 11-46 Senior Milage, 2013 appropriation.
So move.
Discussions on the resolution. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Okay, the area, item number C, Area Agency 1B Reappointments.
I would move that we send Mr. Vern Bartley Jr. for the Board of Commissioners Committee report. Is that the right one?
Yes, it is.
On to full board.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor for Mr. Bartley for the full board, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Moving on to item 7D, Commission on Aging Repointment.
Make a motion to reappoint Ms. Crystal Jones to a term expiring 12/31/15, and reappoint Ms. Pamela Wall to a term expiring also 12/31/2015.
Move my Commissioner Ward, does there, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion or question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None?
I just, one, that's all right, just one little question, and that is, District 6, David Vogel, his term expires too, according to this information. Did he request reappointment?
No, not if it's not marked.
So we have a vacancy there?
Uh, we, yes, we will.
We will have a vacancy. Okay, do you recall, is this go according to County Commission Districts?
Um, hold on, let me, that, not, Commission on Aging, it looks like it.
I believe it does.
It is, yep.
Okay.
District 6, is that?
District 6 will have an opening.
Okay, was that noted by?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, moving on to, where are we? Item 7E, Health Advisory aboard reappointment.
Make a motion that we send Ms. Barbara A. Brits to full board for reappointment to the board, term expiring 12/31/2014, and Dr. Scott McPhilleney, also expiring 12/31/2014, and I think one more, Mr. John Parsons, expiring 12/31/2014.
Good job.
Second?
I would say that I serve on that committee, and I know these three gentlemen very well, and they're very, they work very hard, and they definitely need the reappointment, and I would support that, if that means anything. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Okay, moving on to the Veterans Affairs Board, reappointment. Item number 7F.
Make the motion to appoint Daniel Crocker to term of 12/31/2016.
Support. Discussion on Daniel Crocker. I also serve on that board, and I would say that I would support that reappointment, Commissioners. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Mr. Chair? Hi, I just have, I just have a question about the vacancy of the World War II member. They're, they're getting up into their late 80s and early 90s, and I'm wondering if maybe it wouldn't be wise to look into maybe appointing someone that's been in Iraq or Afghanistan to represent the veterans.
Mr. Chairman? Funny you should bring that one up. I just asked a gentleman yesterday from World War II if he would be willing to serve on it. He's 93 years old and in good health, but he was leery about driving all the way to Port Huron on a monthly basis, and he asked for a little time to think about it, so before we make too many changes there, give me a week, and I'll have an answer for you, but...
Oh, that, if there's someone that's willing to serve, I'm...
If I could talk him into it, I would love to see him do it, but he's about the only guy I know left that's still from World War II.
I see Mr. Bacon's in the audience. Did you have anything you'd like to add to that comment?
No, I think the guys got it handled.
Any other discussion? Okay, moving on to Other Human Services Matters, number eight. Hearing none, moving on to Information Only, MSU Key Partner Award.
Make the motion to receive and file information only.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I move to adjourn.
How about, can we receive and file packets first, Mr.?
We did that.
We just did that.
Okay. Move to adjourn? Is there a second to adjourn?
Jeff moved on to information only.
Information only, yeah.
Jeff was information only, so you got, I'd make a motion to receive and file packets.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Thank you.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Like to call to order, please, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Judiciary Public Safety Committee meeting. If the clerk would take the rule, please.
Commissioner Ward?
Here.
Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Here.
Commissioner London?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Greatop?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Any additions or deletions or changes to the agenda? Hearing none, can we get a motion?
Move to approve the agendas.
Support. Motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Citizens wishing to address the Judiciary and Public Safety Committee, any citizens? Hearing none, any updates from any Commissioners?
I have one, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
In case, just a quick report on some highlights from the St. Clair County Intervention Academy. Just a few items. For those individuals incarcerated typically for, let's say, less than a year, the average incoming reading and math scores for 2012, 2013. For reading, the general level coming in was 8.05. Exiting the reading and math program, many of them, let's say the average was six months, the average in reading was 9.1. For math, the beginning was 6.7 grade level, exiting 8.6 grade level. So within that six-month period, typically, they went up one grade level in reading and, or more, and two grade levels in math. Most important one, we have had those students that were incarcerated there, they recovered 888.5 units of credit. So when they returned to their school, they're, in many cases, a little closer to getting back with the mainstream. And then GEDs earned in the adult section, 388 adults have earned GEDs and 83 juveniles. So we're looking at, we're coming up on about 450 GEDs.
What period of time is that?
The typical, that's, that's for the whole time that we've been operating.
Which is?
Four years.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think we're the only in the state, aren't we, Howard? The only jail?
School.
I think they're...
Charter school.
Yeah, I think we're the only charter school that functions at the Intervention Academy. The highest overall GED score earned by an Intervention Academy student was 750. 800 is the maximum score. The highest single GED score earned by two Intervention Academy students was 800. So we've had two hit the highest. That's pretty amazing. I thought, I'd share that with you and the community.
Good, thank you. Commissioner Bohm?
A little, actually, the three of us can kind of tag-team this one. Central Dispatch meeting yesterday. I had asked Tim Conger a few months back to do some checking into some possibilities for a backup center, so to speak, for us. As you know, we have, currently have our 911 system housed in the Sheriff's Department, and Port Huron is quote-unquote our backup center at the time being, but if you talk to Chief Reeves, Chief Reeves sits on that board, along with Chief Drake from Clay Township, which they actually have their own dispatch down there, and all parties will agree that they're not capable nor is Port Huron sufficient to be our backup center, okay? Tim Conger went on, looked at three different options. He went and spoke with them, Macombe, Macombe's in the process of building a very large dispatch center. We've got Serisa, which is a dispatch center, which our former director, Sherry Bartram, actually heads that up, and Lapeer County is actually coming online with their dispatch center here in the next, they said 30 days. I actually talked to the chairman of the board today from Lapeer County regarding it, and I know Bill had reached out to the administrator. But basically, what it would come down to is it would be a mutual agreement between us and whomever we chose. After speaking with the Central Dispatch Board and our relationships, I think, with Lapeer County, we, you know, do their assessing right now, we do their Veterans Affairs, and we're some talks with other, you know, arrangements with them, where it would be a situation where if you, if your backup, if your center went down, basically, your calls would be routed to the other center and vice versa. Now, I will tell you that in the 19 years that Tim Conger's been in place, we've never had a situation where they've had to abandon the center, so to speak. So these things going down are not a regular occurrence, but you still need that capability. Currently, we're spending $11,000 a year to keep the Port Huron lines open, or, you know, the center open, just to have those lines. They feel that it would be better of working out a mutual agreement with a neighboring county as Lapeer, which, where they're backup, they're our backup, vice versa. There's a minimal amount of money they're talking about to have to buy some equipment that you would put in. I think we need to look at an arrangement which, you know, it's a 30-day out, whatever it is, you know, so on and so forth, so. But bottom line is that the whole board agreed to continue discussions with Lapeer. I had a conversation with their chairman today, very interested. Bill, you had talked with administrator today. You want to pipe in a little bit on some of your conversations, or?
Sure, we just talked about the concept, myself and the county administrator in Lapeer, and they're very interested in it as well. He knows that his Central Dispatch director has been talking with our director as well about the concept for a couple of months now, and he is certainly very supportive of it.
Steve?
Check with Tim Donlin to see if there's anything he might note on either selection or timing.
Tim sits on that board.
I understand, so he thinks Lapeer's the right choice?
Yeah, Lapeer, and truthfully, it's nothing that, like, if you do it, that you're tied to him for the rest of your life, I mean...
I understand.
Yeah.
He's the major law enforcement force in the county.
Yep, no, Tim sits on the board, that board overwhelmingly. There wasn't anybody that said we shouldn't be looking at Lapeer, and everybody thought it was a, was a good idea, and like I said, currently, we're putting money into those lines. There is some capital costs, and I'll have Tim come in and talk in the near future about it, because there is some equipment that you have to buy to put into the other person's center and vice versa. You actually own that equipment.
Does the county currently dispatched out of the Sheriff's Department as such, or do they have an...
You know what, they're in the process of putting, they're building their dispatch center over there. I am going to go over there next on the 14th to go take a look at their dispatch center. Tim's continuing to work on it. It'll be coming back before us, too, but it makes, everybody says it makes a bunch of sense. We don't currently have a quote-unquote bona fide backup, you know, center.
Sounds good.
In place, and it's...
Sherry Bartram had gone to Roseville and now...
Serisa is where she's at. That's called...
Is that the same thing?
Well, it's Roseville, St. Clair Shores, their acronym is Serisa. They, the three different options that they looked at were Macombe. Macombe's in the process of building quite a state-of-the-art center down there. There's still a little bit of ways. Serisa, we could do it tomorrow with them, and Lapeer County's going to be up in the very near future, and we just felt that our relationships currently with Lapeer, like I said, we do their assessing, we do their Veterans Affairs, we do some of the other stuff.
If their dispatch director is our former dispatch director, that's got to help, too.
Well, that's Serisa.
Right.
We're not talking, we're talking Lapeer County is who we're really. We're going to see if Lapeer, we'll bring both options back to the table. Truthfully, it's a no-cost situation.
I thought that Bartram was in Lapeer, but you're saying...
No, she's in, Sherry is at Serisa, and there's been the discussions, like I said, with Lapeer, so we're going to be bringing, it's going to be either one of those options, it looks like, you know, and it's a mutual aid type of agreement, and it's something that we need to put in place, and then later down the road, if we decide to go in a different direction, we'll have the opportunity to opt out and vice versa, so. Because to put any money into, when you start talking about all these upgrades and all these other things that need to be done, for example, the Port Huron system, are you going to put a bunch of money into something that you potentially, you don't use, you know, on the long and short of it, so.
Very good. Any more updates from any Commissioners? No conceptual initiatives? And there's no old business under new business? Item 7A, 2010 interlocal agreement between Macombe and St. Clair County's Homeland Security Grant Program. Jeff Friedland in the audience, and we have three pieces for him, if you'd like him to come up and explain any questions you may have.
I'd make a motion on the Homeland Security interlocal agreement.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a support. Any discussion? Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, moving in on to the full board?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, let's go down to 7B. Again, this is 2011 interlocal agreement between Macombe and St. Clair County's Homeland Security Grant Program.
Will we take that to the full board?
Support. I have a motion to support. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 7C, this is the 2012 interlocal agreement between Macombe and St. Clair County's Homeland Security Grant Program.
I'd make a motion.
Second. I have a motion to support. Are there any questions for Mr. Friedland? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Jeff, for being here. All right, let's move on to 7D, fiscal year 2013 Marine Safety Grant Application. I see somewhere, yep, we have the undersheriff here, if you have any questions.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Pretty standard stuff.
I have a motion to support. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion, or anybody opposed? Very good. Item 7E, fiscal year 2013 Residential Substance Abuse Treatment with Catholic Social Services.
I would so move the residential substance abuse treatment agreement with Catholic Social Services.
Support. I have a motion to support. Any questions or discussions?
Yes.
Yes, sir?
I was just very from the previous, pulled across.
Deb Johnson, or Deb O'Brien in the audience? Undersheriff, do you, Tom, do you have any knowledge of this?
Well, I thought that was...
Yeah, I did, too.
I can't, honestly can't swear to it, but I believe that this is exactly just a continuation of an agreement we've had with Catholic Social Services to do some of the treatment programs in the jail. in the jail. I can't, I can't speak to the figures, I'm sorry.
Bill, if you'd find out if there's any variance.
Sure.
I'm sure if you want, before you guys vote on it, next week, I can have that information for you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Tom. And any other questions? Those in favor of sending it on to the full board, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 7F, Residential Substance Abuse Treatment Program Grant Agreement.
So moved.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Are there any questions, gentlemen? Hearing none, those in favor, send it to the full board.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, goes to the full board. Item 7G, Law Enforcement Services Agreement with Algenac Addendum A.
So moved.
And?
To follow, to.
Yep, moved.
Support.
And supported. Tom, just real quickly, just fill us in. I know what it's about, but let these guys know.
We, when we entered the agreement with Algenac to provide law enforcement services, we gave them an estimation of what it would cost yearly for fuel. It's something that we do in all the contracts. We give them an estimate, and then we bill them the actual costs. What Algenac did is they looked, they had a, they've had an agreement with Speedway Gas Station in their city to fuel their city vehicles in the past. They asked if it would be possible if they just used that service to fuel the patrol cars, and they would pay the bill directly. It wouldn't pass through us. We would have essentially nothing to do with it. They would just, the officers would fill the cars, and then Algenac would pay the bill. Since it's a pass-through cost, it's nothing, we're not losing anything on the bottom line of the contract. It's not going to cost us any extra. It simply, quite frankly, takes the cost out of our hands, or the billing out of our hands, puts it into Algenac's hands.
They were spending about probably twenty to thirty minutes round trip every time they needed fuel. They had to leave the area and go to Marine City, Twenty-Six and.
With us fueling a Pacific Pride, the closest one is Marine City, Twenty-Six Mile and King, so they'd have to leave Algenac, drive to Marine City and fuel up.
Yeah, the city kind of didn't like them leaving the area for thirty minutes on their, on their time, so.
I can understand that one.
Are there any questions, gentlemen? Hearing none, all those in favor, sending it on to the full board.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Stay up there, Tom. 7H is the Marine Division Coordinator Agreement Renewal with Lieutenant Denny Maury. That's their marine.
Will we send it to the entire board?
Support.
I have a motion of support to send it on to the full board. Any discussion or questions, gentlemen? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? One more, I guess. Item 7I, Purchase of Dynamic Imaging Software System from the Sheriff's Office. And, gentlemen, if we could, unless you have a problem with that, they would like to do this for final action tonight. Can we do that?
Next week, I mean, it's, you moved up the meeting until next week.
Yeah, we moved it, meeting's next week. Does it matter?
We could live, you know, if you don't feel comfortable with final action, then we can live with this, but.
It's your pleasure, gentlemen. You want to do it for final action or your reason? Why did you want a final action?
The reason, yeah, the reason we had, well, to kind of start off with, so that we don't put the cart before the horse, the system we use now is essentially broken. It's a system we've had for several years. The owner, who was the loan support person for that system, passed away. So, when the system started to degrade, RIT did the best they could. They've kept it up and running for a couple of years, but it's beyond repair at this point.
You have an urgent need at this time.
An urgent need, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I would move the Dynamic Imaging Software System for final action tonight.
Support.
Motion to support for final action tonight. Questions now, guys? No questions? Okay, we need roll call on this, then? Please?
Commissioner Bowman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
I don't know if this is yours or not, Tom, but, all right, Item 7J is Dispatch Fee Refunds Law Enforcement Services Agreement. I don't think it's yours. Thank you very much.
So moved. This is with Fort Grashit, support. This would be for Fort, with Fort Grashit, East China and China and Port Huron Township, that's right?
Yes. We have a motion?
I think we, yeah, so moved.
Second.
And a support? Discussion or questions, gentlemen?
I just have a question. We've collected these fees, and I guess I wonder how budgetarily we work this out? Where's the money coming from if we've already budgeted this revenue?
Well, the funds for support of all dispatch fees this year have been taken out of the landfill fund. These fees have been received. We planned all along for the total cost to come from the other source, so at some point, we needed to reimburse. The communities have been inquiring because they knew the bills didn't go out, so.
So, we, this money has sat in the landfill fund or in the general fund as basically unexpected revenue? And it was, so it's, we're not going to need to take it out of contingency to refund it because we never, because we put it in like a holding account, or how are we accounting for it? Does it affect contingency?
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes, you have collectively, how many years is this sixty-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighteen been collected for?
No, this amount is just for the bills for this year, for two thousand and twelve.
Okay.
These communities are billed monthly. You'll see on the back, for instance, Fort Grashit Township, their total is twenty-six thousand. That represents nine payments. East China has only paid for eight months so far, so these are just monthly payments.
Okay, because I know I, I just want to make it for two thousand and twelve only. It isn't any retroactive for the previous years?
No, no, it is not.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of sending it on to the full board?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries, goes to the full board. Item 7K is Central Dispatch Advisory Board Reappointments.
I would make the motion as presented.
All right, looks like Bill Dieter from twelve thirty-one, two thousand and sixteen, and Jeff, Jeff Friedland, twelve thirty-one, two thousand and sixteen, and Chief Mike Reeves, twelve thirty-one, two thousand and sixteen, and added a new one in there, Mike Wenley, twelve thirty-one, two thousand and sixteen. He's replacing Chief Taranto, who moved out of the area. And then, the state police are going to send Sergeant Todd. Level, how does he say that, Jeff?
Levy.
Levy, okay. We have a motion to support. Any questions on those appointments?
Do we have a support?
Support.
Motion supported, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven L, Concealed Weapons Licensing Board. Did we just do that, didn't we?
No. We did seven K, I believe.
Yeah, we're on.
We're seven L.
All right.
Motion as presented.
Support.
Motion to support. Discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any other judiciary public safety matters? Nothing? Information only? You've got a grant award notice, Strategic Title Enforcement Program? Somebody would give me a motion to receive and file that?
Move to receive and file packet.
Support.
That's just on that grant notice? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now, receive and file the full packet?
Move to receive and file packet.
Support.
Thank you. All in favor, guys?
Aye.
Move to adjourn. Motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Yes.
Yes. Rock and roll. Rock and roll, buddy.
Like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental and Public Works Committee meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you take the role, please?
Commissioner Ward?
Here.
Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing? Commissioner London?
Here.
Commissioner Bowman?
Here.
Commissioner Greitop?
Here.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Do we have any citizens wishing to be heard regarding?
How about the agenda?
Oh, we better get the agenda. I think we have an item on the agenda that needs to be deleted.
Move to remove Item 7A.
Support.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Need a motion to?
Move to approve the agenda as amended, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we need a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Okay, we'll move to citizens to be heard. Do we have any? Seeing none? Any updates from commissioners?
Just a friendly reminder on the workshop on December nineteenth at five thirty P.M. If commissioners, if you get an opportunity, maybe if you could call some of your township folks just to let them know and ask them to come to that meeting, because there's going to be a lot of things discussed with landfill, some solid waste, possible amendments, so on and so forth. I know I reached out and talked to a couple of mine today, and if you just give them the old friendly reminder and come on to the meeting. Five thirty, nine, yeah, and the nineteenth here.
Okay, any others? Commissioner?
Yeah, just on the same item, I did a ten Riley Township Board meeting on Tuesday night. I talked to the supervisor at Wales, also their trustee on this matter, and gave them a complete rundown. Talked to Bob McCoy at Ira Township, contacted supervisor at Casco Township, and also Columbus, and they're all aware, and gave them a pretty good rundown of what we're looking at. So, they're, they got their facts, the information to them, and they have it in their hands, so they have some questions ready when they do get here on the nineteenth.
Good, good, excellent. Any other, any, any other updates? Seeing none? Any conceptual initiatives from our administrator controlling? None? No old business? New business? We'll go to 7B, the Fort Grashit Light Station MLAP Grant Application. Mark is here.
Hello? Tonight, we're asking for the process to continue to give us permission to submit an application to the Michigan Lighthouse Assistance Program. It's a state-of-Michigan program administered by MISTDA through their State Historic Preservation Office. The revenues come from specialty license plates, the lighthouse specialty license plates. This, we have previously completed a MLAP grant to replace the roof on the Equipment Building just inside the front gate, and repair and repaint the metal roof on the Fog Signal Building and other minor miscellaneous things. That was a grant that we completed last spring and are trying to complete the reimbursement process. We are asking for permission to submit an application for the two thousand and thirteen program. The local match is being pledged by the Friends of the Fort Grashit Light, much the same as they did the first time around. The agreement is they would provide the local match, the county would provide the administrative services and professional services, and the balance would come from the state of Michigan. I, in your paperwork, I misquoted myself. The grant is twenty thousand local match and a forty thousand dollar grant, so it'd be a sixty thousand dollar total project. I've been juggling too many grant projects. I lost track of the matching amount. I do, the project is proposed to replace the roof on the former Coast Guard Station with all the improvements at the property. We have to go, the improvements has to be based on the Historic Structures Report and take it back to the condition it was in the nineteen thirties. That is our period of interpretation that was agreed to with the federal government. So, in the case of the Coast Guard Station, we would remove the asphalt shingle roof and replace it with a sawn cedar shingle roof, similar to the one that's on the Equipment Building. So, we're asking for permission to that. To do that, I do have to say in good faith to you and context, we are struggling with our reimbursement on our first grant application, and that there is a required historic preservation easement required for final reimbursement. Our County Corporation Council has had concerns about the language that the state has in the proposed easement, and we have attempted to have them consider Mr. Fletcher's proposed changes to the easement, and up to this point, we have been unsuccessful. But at this point, we're asking strictly for permission to submit the application, and as you know, until such time as we have a grant contract in our hands and in front of you, we are not committed to do the projects. So, at this point, I'm asking for permission to keep moving forward with the application, and if we cannot sort out the Historic Preservation Easement disagreement to your satisfaction, then we would no longer pursue the application.
So, Mark, what you're saying, you're asking for the application for sixty thousand instead of forty, as in the documents?
Correct. It'd be a sixty, no, it'd be a sixty thousand dollar project. It'd be twenty thousand local match, forty thousand for MLAP grant money.
If I could ask, is the twenty thousand in the budget?
It's coming from, it would, it's coming from the Port Huron Museum. It would be part of the two thousand and fourteen budget, so we don't even have a budget for that year yet. But typically, the park commission upfronts the grant until, and then asks for reimbursement from the participating partners.
The Port Huron Museum will be getting that from Friends of the Lighthouse?
Yes. We have a letter of commitment from the Port Huron Museum.
Just to elaborate a little bit, Bill Kaufman and myself actually met with Gary regarding what Mark had talked about.
Didn't know that.
We were talking about a whole bunch of other stuff, but he brought this up, that he had some concerns in the language that they have with this, that it's very strict language.
Open-ended on their part.
Yeah, and Gary wasn't comfortable with it. I go back to your recommendation, will apply. If Gary can't get it worked out, then it's something perhaps that we would have to pull.
So, we're not approving the language, we're just approving the application?
Yeah. It was a really, tied you to, you have to do this, you have to do this. I mean, they could, I want to say essentially long checkbook you, but it could get, you know.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yeah, I'm all in support of this, but the actual figures are going to be sixty thousand. We've become a forty above and beyond the twenty.
Yes.
Other than the forty-five.
Yes.
Was there a motion around that?
Not yet.
Was there? We need a motion?
I'll move on the application grant for sixty thousand for Parks and Recreation.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second, Commissioner Bowman? Second, Commissioner Bohm. Any other discussion?
I'm sorry, Mark, I'm gonna beach up on the, on the forty versus sixty. I can understand the grant's going up to forty, the grant application, but that, how does that necessarily increase the expense?
We're proposing to do the same work. It's sixty thousand dollar total budget, forty thousand. We were, the originally, when we were working on the project, we were gonna try to squeeze it into forty thousand. It was-
So your, your guesstimate is that construction won't be forty, it'll be sixty?
Yeah, we will be able to do everything we want to do, uh, under the sixty thousand budget.
Where the forty, you would've had to left some things-
We probably would've had to do some, bid it out menu-style and pick what we could afford under the forty thousand. I think we can do a better job and work more completely under the sixty thousand dollar budget.
And, and the two thousand and fourteen, getting the work done, that's accurate, it's not a typo, that it'll be a year out?
It takes that long to get through the bureaucracy of the grant, and with the State Historic Preservation Office, you have to get approval every step of the way, and it may be two or three weeks before you get an approval. So it's a very convoluted process.
Alright, thank you.
But they, uh, that's good news for the museum, because it gives them two years to raise the twenty thousand, so.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just if I may, on a related note, that we have a coastal zone management grant that you approved the contract. The contractor's wrapping up. If you get a chance to go out there, sidewalks have all been poured, the interpretive panels, frames for the interpretive panels have, were installed today. We're expecting the concrete benches to be delivered and installed early next week, so the project's almost wrapped up. That, that grant does not require a historic preservation easement.
Okay, some good things. Okay, the Goodos County Park Roof Replacement for two thousand thirteen?
As you know, uh, just over a year ago, we went out for bid for roof replacements at Goodos County Park, and the low bidder was Reasonable Roofing of Port Huron Township, and there were a menu of roofs that were included, and the five worst roofs were awarded. Reasonable was awarded a contract for the five worst roofs. In conversa- in our expectation and in the capital improvement program budget for the next two years, we had included, asked to be included two additional roofs each of the next two years. In conversation with the project manager for Reasonable Roofing, I had mentioned that we would be getting back with them on going out to bid, and they said, we're prepared to honor our bid prices from two thousand eleven. They were the low bidder of two bidders, they're only local, the only local bidder. They did an excellent job. And so we're asking you for consideration to award, uh, two additional roofs on the unit prices that were given in October of two thousand eleven.
Make the motion.
We have a motion made by Commissioner Graytop, second by Commissioner Rushing. Any questions regarding?
Howard?
Yes. Commissioner Rushing?
That, that, this cost for the ninety-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven, that is in your budget, though?
For two thousand, yeah, for two thousand thirteen, absolutely.
So it was already in your upcoming budget?
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mark? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried.
On an update for that, you awarded a contract for the bunker renovation, bunker building renovation. They were installing the last pieces of the metal roof, and that project's pretty much completed now.
Excellent. The Survey and Remonumentation, uh, two thousand thirteen Grant Application.
Make a motion, we send it to the full board.
We have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samasco. This is pretty much the same as the one last year, isn't it? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. The Aeronautics Advisory Board Reappointment.
Make a motion that Mr. William McKelvey be reappointed through nine thirty two thousand fifteen.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, next is the Agricultural Preservation Board Reappointment. See, we've got Terry Gill.
I'd make a motion for the reappointment of Ms. Terry Gill to a term ending twelve thirty-one, two thousand and sixteen.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. We'll send that on to the full board. Uh, just a note here, we have two vacancies on the Agricultural Preservation Board. One from home building and development, and another one from natural resources and conservationists. So if you know of anyone that meets those qualifications, please pass on their names. The Road Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that Ken Forsner be reappointed, uh, to the Road Commissioner as, with the term ending of twelve thirty-one, two thousand eighteen.
Support?
Before we vote on that, I wanted to mention that I've been attending the Road Commission meetings now for a couple of years, since I was appointed to that by Mr. Bohm. And I would say they, the Road Commissioners, they work extremely hard, they're engaged in the issues, and I'm just proud. Ken is here this evening, you know, if there's any questions for him, but I just want to say that I think they're doing a fabulous job with a great administrator as well.
Ken, you got any comments you'd like to make? Two thousand and eighteen's a long time. I know you're not a spring chicken.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Okay, the Brownfield, or, uh, whoa, what? I got, uh, something in here in the wrong place. No, that's, that's my fault. Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, uh, Board Reappointment.
Chairman, I move Mr. John P. Cooper to be reappointed, uh, through ten thirty-one, two thousand fifteen, and Mr. John Osborne also through ten thirty-one, two thousand fifteen.
I'll support that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Metropolitan Planning Commission Reappointment.
I would move the reappointment of Mr. Stephen Cooper, Ms. Dorothy DeBoyer, and Mr. Tom Sass. I'm assuming that these are all three-year terms, so that they would expire in two thousand and fifteen.
I would, uh, can I add to that?
You certainly may.
We had an individual, I think that was interested in, um, an appointment to the Metropolitan Planning Board, if I'm not mistaken. Steve, did you have a, uh, individual you'd like to put up?
Well, there was some discussion about, um, there are a number of people putting in for various positions. I guess I would move to add Donald Sheldon and William Foster to that, um, suggested nominations as well. They're both being considered on Parks and Rec, which comes up next.
I just, I would ask the chair procedurally that, you know, the, um, A, each of these, the motion that I made already has the people designated. So, I mean, I don't have a, I mean, I can withdraw my motion for discussion, or-
Just add for, I'm just adding, asking that we add those for consideration, along with those that you've mentioned. That's the nature of my motion. What would be an amendment to your motion?
Do they have, do you have slots for them? I mean, do they have to, I, it says position, for instance, Steve Cooper is Recreation and Tourism. I'm assuming that that board seat is, that Steve holds is designated for that slot. Ms. Dorothy DeBoyer is Local Government, so I'm assuming that-
We could, at the time of the motion in front of the full board, formulate a designation for those that we actually want to appoint. That was what I would think we would do. In other words, this, this moves it on to full board, but we, these appointments may or may not be those appointed at full board. If there's five people up in three spots, we're gonna have three of the five. This is just a nomination. We're not actually making appointment, we're just nominating for consideration.
Correct. And then normally, what would happen is that the full board, if there are more names available for consideration than there are slots available, there's normally a ballot election or a ballot poll taken.
Okay, then I would amend my motion to reflect your suggestion.
Let's support that motion, then.
Okay, we have a motion to amend it.
Should we vote on the amendment first, Mr. Chairman?
We could do a friendly amendment. He agrees, you, it was never seconded, so he's-
I got you.
So, so we're, we're basically submitting five names for Metropolitan Planning Commission, of which we will sort out at a later date.
Yeah, well, next week.
Next week. Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Those names will be passed on. This time, we have Park and Rec Commission Appointments.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I would move that the name Cheryl Wallace from District Six and Seven be appointed to a vacant position right there, since, um, Mr. Dennis Bezinski turned in a letter indicating he did want to proceed with serving there. Term expiring twelve thirteen, or twelve thirty-one, two thousand twelve. Oh, that's not right.
Be, uh-
Yeah, three-year. Three-year term, two thousand fifteen, then.
Two thousand fifteen.
And further, that, um, Mr. William Foster be appointed to, um, for the position that Mr. Swigles is running for, that Mr. William Foster and Mr. Donald Sheldon both, um, be appointed to those positions. So that would be William Foster, Don Sheldon, and Cheryl Wallace.
I would support that.
Aye. Oh, I would like to, uh, add, uh, Mr. Swigles' name to it, too, as he has asked for reappointment.
I, um, can I do a friendly amendment?
Yep.
I would include Mr. Swigles.
Yeah, that's fine. I know we'll probably end up just voting on everything next week.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, all in favor, say aye? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
What I understand is we now have four appointments potentially for two vacancies.
Uh, no, the District Six, Seven appointment is fixed. It would be for the at-large position.
Then we have three.
Yeah, we have three for the at-large position. Okay?
I'd support.
Bones, yeah.
Commissioner Bohm. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. The Solid Waste Management Planning Committee Reappointment.
If I could jump in for a moment? The document that's before you, um, is, was sent to you inadvertently. There are two names that have been proposed in addition to what you see circled. There is a, an individual that has expressed interest in the general public, one of the general public positions, Mr. John Jones from Ira Township. Many of you, I believe, know him.
He's on, uh, the Health Committee, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
And then, under Solid Waste Management Industry, a name has been offered, and he has expressed interest. His name is Mr. Jeff Vore, I believe it is, V.O.R.E. He is the owner of Jeff's Rubbish. That would qualify as a Solid Waste Management Industry Representative. So that would be in addition to the remaining six that you see circled on your form.
And we still have, and we'll still have an opening.
Yeah, we still have an opening for the city government.
And we have another solid waste industry vacant, and we have two general public positions vacant as well.
Mr. Vore would be a solid waste industry individual.
Correct, yes, that's one.
And Mr. Ward had offered up to serve on that committee, once he goes into retirement here.
Excellent.
So does he like this, does he like these appointments, then?
General public.
And really, I'd asked him to be on there, because a lot of the discussions surround our landfill, and I mean, he's been on the board for a length of time and has a very good working knowledge of it, so it's not like that. This board doesn't meet on. We had the first meeting out of seven, four years here the other day. It's not like it's a regular-
Is he gonna make the meetings, though, Mr. Chairman?
So, so we have, uh, three, three-
These meetings are called just on, when needed, you know.
And, uh, so we have three additional names that we have submitted this time. At this time, yes, Commissioner Rushing?
I'll move that we, uh, support the nine names that have been submitted to the board.
Okay, uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Great, thanks.
Can I vote on myself, or I have to abstain?
No, you're, you're getting ray-rodeed. Okay, uh, the Smiths Creek Landfill Activities Report, uh-
Move to accept that.
Okay, is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved and supported by Commissioner London. Motion made by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion on the activities report?
It's in order.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nays? Motion carried. Any other environmental or public works matters? Uh, we have several information-only pieces, the two thousand thirteen Road Commission Department of Public Works meeting schedule, and so we're going to put Ken to work immediately. We have an EPA statement for underground injection control major class-two permit modification, uh-
I'd make the motion to accept the information only.
Support.
Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Motion received and filed packets.
Support.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Move to adjourn.
Move, we adjourn. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. At this time, I would, uh, call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Ways and Means Committee my final meeting to order.
Final meeting?
Final meeting of my, the Ways and Means Committee.
Okay, okay.
Come on now.
I'm sorry, I'm losing it.
Be on the stick here. Got a rattle on the jet, the handle there. We take the roll, please?
Commissioner Samasco.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Here.
Commissioner London?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Graytop?
Here.
Commissioner Ward?
I'm here. There, there is a addition to the, to the agenda, and also a request for item seventy for final action. If there is a motion for that, please.
I'll move the motion to accept the revised, uh, agenda. Yes.
We have to first move to, to revise it, which if you would make that motion.
Move to revise the, uh, agenda, Mr. Chairman?
I would second it.
Mr. Heidemann, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we need a motion to accept the revised agenda.
So move.
Is there support?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Any citizens wishing you be heard? Seeing none? Any updates? Conceptual initiatives?
No.
No old business, new business? Professional services contract with David French, project advisor, convention center.
Make the motion.
Support.
Questions?
And this is on an hourly basis, not to exceed thirty thousand?
Correct.
Excellent.
Page ten.
Money well spent.
Well, yes.
Any questions? If none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Veterans Affairs Request for Addition to the Manning Table. Part-time clerk typist, one.
Motion. Motion to move it on to the full board.
Support.
Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Health Department Request for Exemption to Hiring Furleys, two clerk typists, two. There's a memo, uh, supporting the request for Mr. Kaufman, the, and, uh-
Motion to move it to the full board?
Or did you, was that, that wasn't the piece for final action? No, this is C.
Full board, then?
Support.
Questions? Recommended by Administration, correct?
It's in the budget?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, moving on to item D, which is for final action, the request, uh, for the Health Department Manning Table change. I think there was a memo at your place on that one as well. That will allow the Health Department to-
Motion.
Final action, allow them to move a little quicker.
Support.
You're on, um, item E right now? On item D.
D.
D. You're on D? Yes.
This change results in a fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollar-
It's already been a motion, it's already been supportive.
Yeah, I know, I'm just, any questions?
I'm sorry.
Howard was pontificating.
There are, Dr., Dr. Merkentiles in the audience.
There are no other questions. I, I don't, that doesn't take roll call, because we're not spending money, correct? It's still voice vote, even though it's final action? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Moving on to item E, uh, Resolution twelve dash thirty-four relative to per diems for boards of commissioners.
Appointed by boards of commissioners.
Oh, okay, excuse me.
I would so move, uh, Resolution twelve thirty-four.
Support.
Question?
Can you, uh, thirty dollars per day, now, how does that break down as to what it used to be?
That, that's-
No difference.
No difference.
Yeah.
Thirty dollars per day.
That would be for, for example, our appointees to the Metropolitan Planning Commission-
Gotcha.
Or to Park and Rec.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
And there's several others, aren't there, Bill?
Yes.
There's others that, that the thirty dollars apply?
Standard deal that we've done for-
Solid waste?
No, not solid waste.
Does he have to pay income tax on that thirty bucks again?
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution twelve dash thirty-five waiving interest accrued on taxes collected by local units.
I would move Resolution twelve dash thirty-five.
Support. Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
I would do this every, I know.
Resolution Twelve dash thirty-seven approving annual wage adjustments for County Association of Non-Union Employees.
Twelve thirty-six?
Twelve thirty-six.
Uh, oh yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I-
Make the motion.
That's twelve thirty-six establishing salaries of specific county elected and non-elected officers for two thousand and thirteen.
I'll second this motion. Jeff, Jeff made it, I support it.
Any questions?
Same as last-
No adjustments to any of these, no changes?
No, there is none.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now get back on track, res, um, item H, Resolution Twelve dash thirty-seven approving annual wage adjustments for County Association of Non-Union Employees.
I would so move Resolution Twelve dash thirty-seven.
Is there support?
Second.
Questions? Any changes here, Bill?
No, there is none.
No questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item I, Resolution Twelve thirty-nine establishing compensation to be paid to members of St. Clair County Road Commission.
I think we should have, oh, you're not here.
So moved.
Support.
Questions? Any increase here?
No, same fee.
Question maybe? If I read it right, they get mileage to their meetings? Is that?
I think, I think the others did two, the thirty-dollar ones did two. Okay.
It's an issue we'll have to take a look at.
I was, I was wondering if that was an issue with the IRS for them also, like it is for us?
We're, we're being told that they are taxed for that, so-
Oh, okay. What's the history that these are so much more than others, because the Road Commission is a bigger organization?
Personally, I couldn't tell you. We can, we can dig into it and find out for us.
What number, what number are you talking about, Commissioner?
The Road Commissioners.
Twelve thirty-nine, aye.
Their pay is considerably more.
I mean, they're, the chair is, or member is sixty-five seventeen, and the chairperson is eighty-five eighty-seven versus other appointed members of Boards and Commissions, some others.
Solid waste, just nothing at all?
Exactly. That was my point.
I've been on the board eight years, and it's been, I've been on the board eight years, and it's been that-
I, I just wondered what the history is, how did they, how did they get like that?
Somewhere along the line of salary got established for them, you know?
Could it be the fact that they sit on two different boards, because they serve both as, uh, public works and?
I'm just asking the question, I don't know, maybe we could just get a little history lesson at the-
Prior to the vote.
Prior to the vote, we got a week to, to work on it.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item J, Resolution Twelve dash forty establishing compensation for St. Clair County Board of Commissioners.
I would move Resolution Twelve dash forty.
Support.
Tim, here's our chance to get even, right?
That's kinda what I would do.
On the way out the door.
We have a roll call on that, Mr. Chairman.
Well, we'll do that next week, Terry, we'll set the stage, see if we can get 'em nervous. All those in favor?
I'm moving to the full board.
Yes. Any opposed? Item K, Resolution Twelve forty-one establishing compensation to be paid to members of the Department of Human Services Board.
So moved.
Support. Questions?
I think the same question that you raised regarding the Road Commission needs to be asked here.
It's probably been around a lot longer than any of us have, or I don't even know what people, and I mean, literally, if it's twenty years worth of stuff, I don't know who in the, the history lesson or where you'd find that out, you know, truthfully, I mean, if you can dig it up, you can, but don't spend, you know, forty hours trying to, you know, I mean.
I, I, my guess is you can probably talk to somebody at the Road Commission, they'll know, for instance, the Road Commission, same with the, um, Department of Human Services, they're, they're gonna know.
I actually spoke to someone, to a DHS Board Member earlier today about another issue, and, um, was informed that their positions are actually appointments from the Governor.
Yep.
So it's entirely possible that this is a fee that's set by the state, but we'll check.
Who's the former administrator that was sending letters on the convention center? For Don Dodge? He might know.
Oh, uh, yes, yes.
He called me on, he was very sharp, and he was on, what's, what was it?
Sam Gray?
Sam Gray, yeah.
Sam, he, he called me a couple times, and he was very sharp, he probably would know that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?